All right. Welcome to the September 30th, 2021 Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ro call Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Smilek, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting, and if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that a technical difficulty may be addressed?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Back to you for any retirement recognitions?
We do. We have a very nice presentation this evening for one of our retirees, and for that, we call Dr. Schneider to the stage.
We actually have two retirees this evening, two district employees that we'd like to honor as they move into this next phase of their life. The first individual that we would like to recognize is Ms. Vicki Yates. She is retiring. You can come on up if you'd like, please. I know that Mr. Gorman had given you your plaque yesterday, so I apologize for that, but we're very glad for you to come forward, please. She has worked 33 years in the district. She is a resident Steelers fan. She has served an estimated 1.9 million meals over the course of her career, which is really just astounding to think. She's instrumental to the Learning Lab at Pleasant Valley and has actually been one of the leaders across the district in terms of our farm-to-table initiatives and bringing in the salad bars, and really was one of the first individuals to embrace that process and those ideals that we're really trying to push forward in terms of healthy nutrition for our students. So we're very grateful for your leadership in that regard. She's worked at a number of different buildings. As I had said, most recently at Pleasant Valley, and Mr. Gorman was really just gushing in terms of your leadership and the things that you've done for that building and helping to carry things forward. On behalf of the staff, students, and families of Parma City School Districts, we thank you for your service and all of your efforts, and we wish you the absolute best in retirement. Congratulations.
Should we get like a picture with her?
No pictures?
Yeah, why don't you call her back up, and we'll take pictures at the end.
Okay. We're going to take some pictures at the end if you just want to wait for just a couple moments, Ms. Yates.
That'd be good.
Vicki, please don't leave. We'll take some pictures at the end.
It's an honor also to have the opportunity to share a few words with you about Jean Golson, who started in the Parma City School District in 1992. Twenty-two years later, we congratulate Ms. Golson on her career and wish her the best in retirement. Jean Golson started in the district as a substitute in the cafeteria. She then moved to a full-time cafeteria position, working at Valley Forge and then Greenbrier. She later moved to John Muir as a clerk. She worked at Thoreau Park before moving to Valley Forge as a secretary in 2006. Ms. Golson has remained at Valley Forge from 2006 until now. Her three children are all graduates of Valley Forge High School. Kara graduated in 2003, and twins Brian and Becky graduated in 2005. A few words about Jean, as shared by various colleagues and supervisors. Hard worker, positive attitude, absolutely loves her grandchildren, efficient and essential, reliable, lifeline for seven years, the heart of the Valley Forge Student Services, best sense of humor, a rock in our student services office, quite simply a wonderful human being. Mrs. Golson, congratulations on a distinguished career. You will be missed. On behalf of those who have had the good fortune to work with you, thank you for what you have provided to the students, staff, and families of the Parma City Schools. We wish you the absolute best in retirement. If you'd like to come forward, please, for your question. Vicki, can you come back up, too?
Are they all going up front?
Do I get the picture or not? I don't know. I don't know.
Jack, come down here. We'll be doing a sound check. All right, ready? Big cloud here, one, two, three. One more right here, big cloud, one, two, three, are they right now?
I love smiling, by the way. Congratulations. That's nails out. When's these are bad?
I didn't know if she should or not.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Now's the appropriate time, Charlie?
Yeah, thank you both for coming. Thank you to all your family members as well. It certainly makes it a very personnel celebration, and we're very glad that you were able to join us tonight, and thank you so much for all of your service.
Grandmother.
27 years in the Cleveland West High School cafeteria. That's when they made things.
Right, right, right. You probably made cake from scratch.
Friend of war, she was accused of taking eggs, because she put extra eggs.
Information to the board, Dr. Smilek?
Yes, Mr. Schweitzer, a couple items. First, we, it's been only two weeks, believe it or not, since we implemented our mask requirement indoors, and, you know, at the time, we talked a lot about certainly the cases of COVID, but we really emphasized the fact that we were quarantining far too many students. And that week ended, so the last day without a mask requirement, ended with 498 students in quarantine. So 498 students could not be in classrooms. They were learning from home via Google Meet and Google Classroom. And today, we have 132 students in quarantine. That's a 73% drop. We know that, you know, masks have been seen as an inconvenience by many, but we continue to weigh that inconvenience versus actually sending students home because of the lack of a mask, and we think that that 73% reduction is extremely significant. Now, the 132 students that are still in quarantine can happen a number of ways. First, could be a lunchroom. Obviously, students take their masks off to eat. Could also be an athletic setting where they're practicing without masks. Many of these students are actually coming from exposure at home, so if you're exposed to someone in your family, you would still be quarantined. But in terms of classroom quarantines, it's not happening anymore. Our students have been extremely receptive and compliant with the mask requirement, and we're very grateful for them and for their family support, and just really happy to see these numbers decreasing the way that they have. Second, I want to make sure the community knows that we have a bonfire scheduled on October 15th. Now, we know that the district has probably had many bonfires, but we haven't had a district one in quite some time, certainly not during my time here. Part of being a big school district is acting like it and celebrating, you know, football season and big events with bands and choirs and orchestras and all of the festivities that you think of when you think of, you know, really an American tradition of Friday Night Lights. So October 15th at 6:00 PM, we will have this bonfire. It is free. It will be in the parking lot just between Byers and Ridge Road. We are also cooking for folks. We can't cook for everybody, but we'll have approximately 1,000 hot dogs and some sides for folks who are able to come between 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock. That is the Normandy versus Parma Senior High game. We'll have some bands out there. We'll do some introductions. We have some giveaways as well. So hoping many folks stop out, and we're looking forward to a very positive Parma night. With that, we also this evening have a very important presentation from Mrs. Stravko. If she wants to come up now. Social-emotional learning is actually a state-mandated component of what we offer, and when you think of social-emotional learning, many different facets can come to your mind. And so we thought, with all the questions around critical race theory and social-emotional learning, and are they the same, we really wanted to clarify, what exactly does social-emotional learning mean in our Parma City Schools? And so Mrs. Stravko is going to walk us through that, and we'll certainly look forward to any board questions at the end of her presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Smilek. This is Ann. Yes, okay. I'm Tiffany Stravko, the Assistant Superintendent, and over the last several years, we've really worked on our instructional playbook, specifically systems, processes, and professional development. And so I want to highlight the other side of our playbook, which is Resilient Learner. And so when we talk about social-emotional learning, what that means is self-management, social awareness, relationship-building, and responsible decision-making. I'm going to take you through what our district is doing in terms of how we are teaching our students, and our curriculum we are using K through 12 and the systems and structures we have in place. So our district goals obviously is to increase student achievement, improve transparency throughout our communities, which is my goal tonight, and practice fiscal responsibility. Our students cannot achieve without our focus on the whole child. My hope is that you will understand ODE standards connected to social-emotional learning and our Resilient Learner playbook. So on the left, you see our playbook, and I'm going to take you through each component. That is how we teach our kids in our school district. On the right is our ODE standards. How we teach our students, we use the term "embrace all." And embrace all, it is not critical race theory, and it is not only diversity. It is our mission to understand the uniqueness of our students, that we are a diverse population, and we have differences, and we have different values, and we come from different backgrounds. And sometimes that encompasses conflict. And so our job as educators and support staff and families is to continue to educate our children through all of these supports. So our next slide, I'm going to focus on embrace all. So you see our mission up there, and I just went over it. I always use this quote, "Every child has a story," and sometimes the chapters do not relate to our own life experiences. So as an educator, as an assistant principal, as a principal, I served in all three of those roles, and my experiences through life were very, very different from colleagues that I worked with and also students in my classroom in my school. So when we talk about social-emotional learning, it's not just about our kids, but it's also providing that support for our staff as we go through trauma, and trauma has certainly increased with our pandemic. We could go back to that last slide, please. It's important data that I just want to share with the board. Our last normal school year, and there is this slide, so if we are looking at kids currently kindergarten through seventh grade on the left, their last normal school year, if we have a seventh grader, that is my son right now, my daughter's in fifth grade, my son's last normal year was when he was in fourth grade. That seems like a lifetime ago. And so when we're talking about the systems and supports we've created, it is so important to understand that majority of our children right now, and even some of our adults, are going through trauma. So I want to take you through what trauma is. Trauma is an exceptional experience, which powerful and dangerous events overwhelm a person's ability to cope. This is in our playbook. We want our educators, our support staff, our families, and our students to understand this. The experience does not have to be life-threatening to trigger a trauma response. So think about COVID. We were isolated. We were not able to socialize at times, and our kids were taken away from various routines that they were used to in that structure. So I gave you the example of our seventh graders right now. Their last normal school year was fourth grade, and it's the child's response and interpretation of the event that creates the harmful impact that matters most, not the event itself. So it's how we're all handling this on top of regular traumatic experiences. So if we continue, there are five fundamental truths about trauma. Trauma is real. Trauma is prevalent. And trauma is toxic to the brain and affects development and learning. Our educators need to be prepared, and as an educator myself, at times as a teacher, as an assistant principal, as a principal, I was not always prepared because I did not have those life experiences. So right now, our teachers, we are working through professional development to teach, to model, and to practice, and our teachers and our support staff are also teaching, modeling, and practicing with our kids. Our children are resilient with trauma in sensitive learning environments and can grow and learn and succeed with the right supports, and that is what is so important here in Parma, which you will see. I want to just talk about the brain. Trauma is a brain issue, not a behavioral issue. So oftentimes, we might hear our children coming home from school, grades K through 12, and they might tell you about a friend, a peer, that maybe displayed different types of behavior than what's going on in our homes currently. And so I want to talk about our brain. We have our downstairs and our upstairs. Anytime we have trauma, it stuffs into our downstairs brain, and it comes out when we have different circumstances and experiences, and oftentimes, it'll come out in behaviors. And so our job as educators, as families, as support staff, is to make sure that we have tools and support to help regulate that upstairs brain. That's all the psychology I'm going to give you right now, but I wanted you to understand that. And adults even have that same issue sometimes, but we have been through life experiences with the tools and the support, so we're able to maintain. Just prior to COVID, some data suggests that, on an average, every classroom has at least one student affected by trauma. This was right before COVID. According to the National Child Traumatic Stress Network, close to 40% of students in the U.S. have been exposed to some form of traumatic stressor in their lives. This includes sexual assault, physical assault, and witnessing domestic violence being the most prevalent. Since COVID, that has almost doubled. So COVID is considered a traumatic experience. So this is the how we teach in Parma, and so you will hear the word "tier." Tier one is for all of our kids. Tier two is targeted supports for a small population of our students. And tier three is our really intense kids. Through our tiers, we go about restorative practices. So what that means is we are teaching, practicing, and modeling relationships, responsibility, and regulation. So the "what" we teach is connected to the Ohio Department of Education's social-emotional learning. And in a nutshell, there are four domains to learning for the whole child. Obviously, foundation, knowledge and skills, that's our core curriculum. Our well-rounded content, that's our science and our social studies and our arts. And then leadership and reasoning and problem-solving. And they added the component of SEL, which is in the bottom right-hand corner of the graphic up there. So again, it's ODE that's driving this, and we are supporting it with what we teach and how we support our kids. Our next slide is just the history, and I'll just take it through, I'll take you through this quickly. In 2012 is when SEL became alive, and that was really in our early years. So preschool and our kindergarten students were really exposed to the social-emotional learning. In 2015, it extended to third grade, because we felt and we saw these gains in our data, and Ohio Department of Education felt, you know, let's extend this. 2018, it became a K through 12 movement with a 2019 adoption of standards. Again, Ohio Department of Education. Our next slide talks about how our standards are kind of broken up. So it's our lower grades, our K, two, and three, and then again, three through five. We split grade three in half sometimes because of how some of our districts are classified. And so also, too, there are competencies. So our main competencies are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And so our standards are there for students, for support staff and educators, to walk through at their own pace. So there are specific things that we do for all kids, and then our more intense kids, we take them through different types of supports. So this is just an example, and I linked in the SEL standards for our board because I send you the presentation. And so this is just a competency. So this is self-awareness, and the way ODE sets up our standards is from the left to the right, it progresses. So you'll see K through two, three through five, middle grades, and high school. So they're working on the same skill. So at the lower grades, you know, if they're working on personal emotions, that's all they're working on at the lower grades, but in high school, it's more complex emotions and more personal state of well-being. So in the elementary, currently, we have second-step curriculum, and this is for all of our kids. Tier one is all of our kids. So this occurs at first step for our preschool kids at circle time. It occurs in our K through four during social studies one day per week, and in grade five during health. Our Board of Education adopted this curriculum in the spring of 2020. Our second-step curriculum, it is really a place for students to learn how to have skills for learning, to show empathy, emotion, and problem-solving. And you can see in the picture, it comes with kits, and we often use puppets at our lower-grade level to show the skills for learning and the different types of emotions. I shared with you on the right-hand side, grade three and unit three. So this is just an example of what all of our kids get in grade three in the emotion management unit. And so our kids, all of our third graders across this district, they get an introduction to emotion, they get managing test anxiety, they get handling accusations, managing disappointment, managing anger, managing hurt feelings. All of these emotions that our kids are going through, and we're increasing their toolkit so that they're able to cope later on. In our middle school, and this is really exciting, we talk about the wheel, and there's a little bit of some misconceptions with the wheel. We have Learning Lab, but we've really beefed up our Learning Lab this year. So all of our kids that go through Learning Lab get six minutes of SEL, where they get a topic, where they read, write, and discuss with a peer, and they also get time with intervention and enrichment. So I just want to read to you, to the board, what this would look like in a classroom so that we're all on the same page. So our students would have a topic, let's say, on self-awareness, and so their prompt would look something like this or sound something like this. Reggie has woke up at 6:00 AM in the morning, he has to get his younger siblings dressed and fix them breakfast. Then he has to walk them to school, then catch his bus to school. His teachers say he seems unmotivated or lazy. So this is a prompt. The kids then, they individually answer the questions and write. Reggie feels overwhelmed about having so many responsibilities. Why do you think he feels that way? Students respond to that prompt individually. Why do you think Reggie has to take care of his siblings? Students respond to that prompt. Do you think Reggie is lazy or unmotivated? Why or why not? So our kids are engaging individually, writing, and then they're discussing with their peers because we've all had those different life experiences. This is happening in our Learning Lab. It's not study hall. And then later, our kids work on their individual enrichment for literacy and math. So our next slide is life skills. So I talked about all kids. That's our six-minute SEL. Now I'm talking about tier two. So sometimes our kids need a little bit more support, and that's where our school counselors come in. And our school counselors will often work with students that are showing more behaviors and need more intensive supports. So in a resolution tonight, we have worked with the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services through ODE, and we have a free resource in which our counselors will be trained on November 2nd. All of the topics are on the right, so our topics include self-image, substance abuse, violence in the media, coping with anxiety, communication skills, social skills, assertiveness, resolving conflict, and peer pressure. And so again, this would be in the form of, we know that our kids have these frequent behaviors, or maybe a family member is reaching out to a counselor, or a teacher is seeing something or hearing something, and our counselors will run groups and work on these topics. This is a free resource, again, no cost to the district, that is fully aligned with our ODE SEL standards. So when you see that resolution tonight, again, no cost to the district. Our next slide is high school. So last year, you approved freshman experience, which is a tier-one curriculum, health, all of our kids take, and college and career readiness. So all of our kids go through social-emotional learning through these three courses. And so it's really exciting because our kids are working on their graduation plans, they're working on college pathways, Google Workspace, conflict communication, everything related to SEL. Our counselors now go into these classrooms because our counselors are grade-level counselors, and they are identifying what kids need, extra support, and then they pull kids, and we have more targeted groups. So again, all kids get the social-emotional curriculum in these courses and in these grade levels. So our tier-two groups at the high school is girls' leadership, and we have it at all three, boys' leadership, social skills management, circle of change and wellness, and anxiety. Again, all of our kids get this curriculum within the required classes, but some of our kids need just a little bit more support. So our counselors have supplemental curriculum connected to SEL standards so that they could connect with our kids that are the most at risk and the ones that need the most support. Lastly, this is what we often call restorative practices. And so again, a process that our staff members, it could be informal, it could be formal, it could be through conflict mediation, but again, it's targeted and intense based on relationships, responsibilities, and how to regulate behavior. So we're working with our staff members through this. It's a work in progress, but we're really excited as we go through this process. And then through all of this, this is not just made-up information. So all of our data came from Kristin Sowers and Peter Hall, and so two years ago, our DLT worked through fostering resilient learners. So our DLT is our district leadership team comprised of administrators and teachers, and a lot of our buildings and their leadership teams are also taking on working through both of these resources. So these authors have dedicated their careers to helping and creating a nest for kids, and I believe it, we are doing it here in Parma, a place where children are okay to not be okay because they all go through trauma at some point in time, and that they are able to learn, grow, and develop in a safe, predictable, consistent environment. And so you have ODE standards, our standards are our roadmap, and then our resources, you've adopted second step already at the elementary level, and you've adopted our supplemental resources at the high school, and today, there is a resolution for our middle school resources. And so that concludes the support that we provide our kids on that resilient learner side. So at this time, I will open it up. And a lot of our buildings and their leadership teams are also taking on working through both of these resources. So these authors have dedicated their careers to helping and creating a nest for kids, and I believe it, we are doing it here in Parma, a place where children are okay to not be okay because they all go through trauma at some point in time, and that they are able to learn, grow, and develop in a safe, predictable, consistent environment. And so you have ODE standards, our standards are our roadmap, and then our resources, you've adopted second step already at the elementary level, and you've adopted our supplemental resources at the high school, and today, there is a resolution for our middle school resources. And so that concludes the support that we provide our kids on that resilient learner side. So at this time, I will open it up for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. That was very thorough, as usual. I do have, well, I didn't expect anything less. I do have a question, though, about who's actually instructing the kids on these processes, the Learning Lab or whatever they're getting the info.
Okay, so at the middle school level, we have Learning Lab teachers that we hired.
Oh, there's actual.
Yeah, there's actual teachers. They are on, they're PEA members on a teacher salary, and they have gone through their professional development on August nineteenth to go through the SEL component. Our counselors do the targeted intervention, and if you approve the resolution tonight, they'll have training on November second for the life skills curriculum.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
No real questions. I mean, I'm a fan. And I, you know, I've been following along, you know, as we've been going and doing some of these things. So thank you for the presentation and, you know, putting it out there so everybody kind of understands.
Thank you.
Good job.
I really love that, I mean, we've had this conversation a long time about, but it used to be back-to-back study halls, and even now it developed into Learning Labs, and I absolutely love the fact, not only that there's teachers in there, but that we are reading, writing, and discussing this content within that space that is not just, I mean, it's just an extra way to get it and address it, and I love, I'm all on board.
I love it, too. Excellent presentation. Mrs. Strappo, thank you for that. I bet the kids are gonna love this. You know, I think it will really help a lot of children learn how to deal with difficulties in their life and empathize with others as well. And I'm really happy to see that it's part of the state's standards. Would it be possible for me to get a copy of these resources to look through?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
I say, great job. I'm a big fan. I think this is wonderful that kids can share experiences with each other.
Yeah, and my whole purpose was just to let you know what social-emotional learning is, and so the community understands it more, and that we are supporting our kids, and we're really proud of the work that we're doing. So thank you for listening. Try to keep it short.
I think those are boys in a lot of children's lives.
You're doing some kind of origami.
You know, that don't have an opportunity to experience this kind of learning at home.
Thank you, Mrs. Strappo. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Great, great job.
Both in style and substance. We appreciate it. Thank you. That concludes our portion of the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Smilak. Communications this evening, Mrs. Carpus. Anything from board members?
I just wanted to take another moment to thank the Parma Council of PTAs for the work that they put out last night, the media candidates night. They were, it takes hours to organize something like this.
Doesn't happen by itself.
It was very well executed, and I just, I commend, commend the PTA every day for all of their volunteer work, and I just, thank you.
Well, yeah, ditto.
Ditto.
As we go.
That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Nucio, anything from the treasurer this evening?
Yes, I'm sure that by now everyone's gotten their property value letter from the county. I'm sure none of you were happy with it. But you can't appeal the value beginning in January, but you do have to have proof either in appraisal or some other documentation that allows you to dispute your figure. The value only increases on inside millage and not the outside millage, which I've mentioned last week. The inside millage is the non-voted, and our share of the ten mil inside millage is five-point-one mils. So the school district will be getting estimated two-point-one million dollars from the increase. It's not your value times all the emergency levies, they all stay the same because they don't change because of House Bill nine-twenty. So I mentioned it last week, but I just want to reiterate that this week.
Thank you.
In case you have any questions on that.
Two-point-one million, you said?
Two-point-one million, yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Do we have a PTA report this evening?
We do. I am going to do my best Nets Petrino imitation. Here we go. Good evening. My name is Nets Petrino, and I am the recording secretary for PCPTA. We held our second meeting of the school year on September eighth. We are excited to welcome Carla from Southwest Community Based Services to speak about the program and services they could provide our families. On September sixteenth, we held a family arts night that included a performance by Sogbadi titled Discover West African Culture. During this high-energy performance, families experienced the rhythms, dances, and songs of West Africa. Our students were able to participate in their own drumming and dancing, and families enjoyed a question-and-answer session following the performance. Last night, Parma Council PTAs hosted a candidates' night for all those running for the school board positions. All candidates were invited to attend, and guests were able to submit questions to be answered by each candidate. We hope that the evening was educational and gave everyone a chance to learn more about our candidates. Special thank you to the district for allowing the event to be livestreamed and recorded. Our next general meeting for Parma Councils of PTAs is Wednesday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at nine forty-five AM at Powers Boulevard Library. All are welcome to attend, and if you would like to speak or give a presentation, just let us know prior to the meeting. We will collect non-perishable food items for the PEA food drive at this meeting. Thursday, October twenty-first, is the Parma Council PTAs Kalahari Night. Please join us if you can help to support our scholarships. Just mention Parma Council when booking your room. Parma Council PTAs will hold our fall workshops and treasurer's tax filing on September, I'm sorry, October twenty-eighth at Parma Senior High for all units. We will be selling point setters again this year from November first through November seventeenth. We pick up on Saturday, December fourth, from nine AM to noon. Thank you for your continued support of our PTA units.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
Any other communications this evening? Do we have any amendments this evening, Mr. Nucio?
We do not.
We do not. We opened the meeting in the public to address the board on tonight's agenda items. Do we have any requests? We do not. Then we move to the approval of record of proceedings. May I move to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-two, approval of the written record of proceedings for the September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular Board of Education meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-two. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-two has been approved. With that, we move to curriculum with Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero-nine dash four-four-three-three, approval of supplemental social-emotional learning curriculum for middle school and high school family and consumer science.
Second.
And motion and second for two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-three. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-three has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero-nine dash four-three-four, approval of overnight and out-of-state field trips.
Second.
Motion and second for two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-four. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-four has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this concludes curriculum for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Business, Mr. Kreis?
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash oh-nine dash four-three-five, approval of the Parma City School District bus routes for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year.
Second.
A motion and second for Resolution two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-five. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-five has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for this evening.
Thank you very much. Right back at you, Mr. Kreis with finance.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash oh-nine dash four-three-six, designation of depositories.
Second.
And motion and second for two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-six. Questions or comments?
Joan, can you just give us a few words about what exactly this is, so everybody knows?
So this is a statutory thing that says every five years, you have to designate your deposit territories where we can deposit our money and how much we're allowed to deposit into that bank. So the banks we use are Huntington and Chase. So I think five years ago, there were like five or six banks listed on the resolution, but we don't use any of them, so we didn't put them on the resolution. These are, Chase is our main bank, and it just allows us to deposit our money in their bank. It's required by a higher revised code every five years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-six has been approved.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh-nine dash four-three-seven, approval of supplemental appropriation.
Second.
And motion and second for two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-seven. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-seven has been approved.
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash oh-nine dash four-three-eight, authorization to accept activity-purpose statement.
Second.
And motion and second for two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-eight. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-eight has been approved.
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash oh-nine dash four-three-nine, approval of then-and-now certificates over three thousand dollars.
Second.
I'll get it. We have a motion and a second for two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-nine. Questions or comments?
Mr. Nucio?
Okay, so these are, PSI is our nursing service, and I saw their nurse in the hall one day, and she said, we have three unpaid bills, or three or four unpaid bills, and I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. So I asked her to send me the bills, and she did, and I looked in our system, and we didn't have these bills in our system. So there was no purchase order because they were all closed, purchase orders at the end of the fiscal year. So we had to create a new purchase order to pay some of these old bills. That's what it.
But they were, they were bills that fell within the budget, right? Like, these weren't over-budget bills?
They were in the, they would have been in the budget last year, they just somehow got either lost on the mail or what happened, but they're just unpaid bills that we had to pay.
All right, you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Nucio. And now, your call.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-three-nine has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash oh-nine dash four-four-zero, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
Motion and second for two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-four-zero. Questions or comments?
As usual, we'd like to thank the people for thinking about the Parma City School District with their kind, kind donations. This seems to benefit Thurl Park Elementary, so it's very, very nice, playground balls and Listelina supplies, and some flowerbed stuff, picnic tables.
Yeah, that stuff from Lowe's looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Picket tables, bird feeders.
Anything about the first step one?
First step won the Lowe's Euro Award.
That's awesome.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, as usual.
Ditto, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-four-zero has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. We move on to legislation. Do we have any legislation this evening, either Mrs. Carpus or Mrs. Bratz?
We do. Do you want to do federal on this one?
Sure.
All right, so I'll go first. Upon enactment of this year's budget bill, the Ohio Department of Education went to work preparing implementation of the new funding formula. While the department initially anticipated moving to the new funding calculations next month, the enormity of these changes will not allow for the October implementation. As a result, implementation of the new school funding formula will not occur until December. It is important to note that delay will not reduce the total amount of funding a school or district will generate in a state funding, in state funding during the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. All the funding calculations are annualized, and payments in December will reconcile against year-to-date dispersments and adjust accordingly. So pretty much, the bottom line stays the same, but there's just a difference in when they're implementing it. And then, Mrs. Bratz?
This is legislation at the federal level, and I will draw your attention to the date of September thirtieth. This seems to happen quite regularly on September thirtieth, when the federal government needs to keep the government open. So Congress is working through a continuing resolution to keep government open through December. However, they don't seem to have an agreement on enacting an extension delay in the debt ceiling government borrowing authority, and that is a critical issue. I believe the date is October eighteenth, the deadline before the bottom falls out of an awful lot of economic issues. So they're expected, though, that they will get this done. Still, a big question as to what else is going to be accomplished in the federal budget. The three-and-a-half trillion-dollar reconciliation bill and the one-trillion-dollar infrastructure bill basically doubles the spending authority of the government in a single year. Progressives won't vote for a watered-down version of the reconciliation bill, and moderates won't vote for the reconciliation bill. So we're, I'm sure you've all seen them battling about this for many, many weeks, and no fix in sight. Hopefully, hopefully, that's a little bit dire. I hope it's, things are happening better. Seems like when they get to deadlines, the pressure, the pressure motivates some folks. So, thank you. That's all, unless another board member has.
Now, from what I read, and they're not shutting the government down and keeping their spending open, that the Senate came to an agreement, and it's the House that has not. I don't know in my head, I thought that was gonna be.
The opposite.
Opposite.
I thought reversed involved.
But apparently, the Senate has come to an agreement, and they're waiting for the House. I'm sure it'll happen.
I had just one small comment. While that, you know, federal-level legislation often is, you know, beyond us, it's extremely important to us with that infrastructure bill because a large percentage of that, and I don't have the exact number at the tip of my tongue here, but would be for school construction. And so we talk a lot here, we've talked a lot about consolidation and consolidation into new, and, you know, potentially in these bills, we could be receiving some help from the federal level.
That'd be awesome, and not normal. As we go, so hopefully, that happens. Any other questions or comments?
That will conclude legislation, then, for this evening. Mr. Schweitzer.
Thank you very much. That moves us to human resources with Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move for the adoption of Resolution two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-four-one, approval of the following certificated exhibits. Confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of supplemental contracts, confirmation of substitute teacher appointments, acceptance of certificated resignation.
Second.
And motion and second for two thousand twenty-one oh nine four-four-one. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-09441 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-09442, acceptance of certificated retirement.
Second.
Motion of second for 2021-09442. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-09442 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-09443, confirmation of certificated administrative appointments replacements.
Second.
Motion of second for 2021-09443. Questions or comments?
I just want to say that, again, it is wonderful to see staff grow within this district, and people move to bigger and better roles of leadership. There are two names on here. I'm not sure about the third name, but two for sure that have been instrumental in their roles, their previous roles, and are now moving to bigger things. So, it is just a nod to our healthy organization.
If I can comment, and we briefed the board on this, but just for, you know, public knowledge too, Mr. Keating has been really, he's extremely dedicated to our Parma schools. He lives in Parma. He's been at just about every function that the Parma City Schools Foundation puts on, that Pi puts on, and so, it's really exciting to see him take another step from the dean position to the assistant principal position. He will also lend some stability to Parma Park. Mrs. Jewell has had to miss some time with some health issues. We're optimistic that she'll be back soon, but Mr. Keating's presence will really solidify that. Ms. Baskowski did really a strong job. She moved from being the dean at Renwood and Parma Park to really trying to do the best she could to fill Mrs. Jewell's shoes while Mrs. Jewell was recovering from some illnesses. She has asked to step out of that role for some family issues, and we respect that, and we respect the job and the effort that she put forward. And again, to your point, Mrs. Carpus, you know, healthy organization, sort of that next person-up mentality. Ms. Garafalo has done a phenomenal job, being the administrative specialist for outside district placement for students with disabilities, and really a difficult job because she's everywhere and nowhere, right? I mean, you're going to all of our outside placements and trying to make sure that our students' needs are being met. And so, she's very excited to also take another step in her career, and she will now be dean of students at Thorough Park. So, we're very excited for all, all three individuals, and grateful for Mrs. Baskowski's leadership during, during the time that she served at Parma Park.
I extend, extend our congratulations to all as well. Thank you for the summary. Dr. Smilak, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-09443 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-09444, approval of the following classified exhibits: Confirmation of classified appointment replacements; Confirmation of change of classified assignments; Approval of classified stipend; Confirmation of classified resignations; Approval of classified, non-compensated leaves of absence.
Second.
A motion of second for 2021-09444. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-09444 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-09445, acceptance of classified retirement.
Second.
We have a motion of second for 2021-09445. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-09445 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-09446, terminating non-teaching contract of Angela Savage.
Second.
A motion of second for 2021-09446. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-09446 has been approved.
Unless there are any questions or comments from other board members, this concludes Human Resources for this evening. Mr. Schweitzer?
Thank you very much. Do we have any policies this evening?
No, there was a policy meeting yesterday. I was unable to attend. I had a medical appointment, but Mr. Vaughn was there, so I'm sure we will have some first readings at the next meeting.
Yep. Mr. Niola was there.
Mr. Niola.
Mr. Niola was there.
He was, he was there for a while. But he loves that name.
I bet. He's a pretty good dude.
Okay. At this point, we have the opportunity to have questions, concerns read into the record. I think we have one this evening.
Wait, hold on, hold on a second. Information by Board?
Oh, any information requested by board members?
Yes, and actually, I do have a request. And, Dr. Smilak, could you be so kind as to explain to us what the game of life is? I know it's not a game that my cousins maybe played when I was little, maybe be the girls and, and boys, and we'd drive little cars around. So, I know it's not that. So, can you tell us how it fits into the curriculum?
I, I'd like to hear more about your game of life that you play.
My training was very helpful.
No, I, I appreciate the question because we actually did invite the board to participate in the game of life, and if any community members that have some time in their schedules over the next week or so that would like to see a really exciting, hands-on experience where students in our high school readiness course, which is primarily our eighth-grade students, but also our college and career readiness courses, which are upperclassmen, 10th and 11th grades, and in the eighth-grade class, that's about 95% of our eighth graders actually take that high school readiness course. But students will actually experience what it's like to balance a checkbook. They'll get checks. They choose their career based upon their interest and based upon some of the activities they've been doing in class. And at that time, they'll get paychecks commensurate with the choices that they've made and the average salary for those career choices. And then, they'll actually move from table to table, and that's where we actually need our volunteers, because volunteers will man the tables. The tables are, you know, stand for transportation or insurance, housing, you know, food, social expenses. And so, at each table, they'll get a kind of a feel for what the expenses are and how that impacts their bottom line. So, again, approximately 95% of our eighth-grade students are involved in that. So, you know, we've, we've heard some sort of, sort of criticism about not teaching children to balance checkbooks and how important that is. Eighty-five, or 95% of our students will participate in this activity. And again, anyone who wants to see how this works or is able to volunteer some time to be at one of those expense tables, we'd love to have you. You can contact me directly or Ms. Plageman, whose department is leading this effort. It's really an exciting experience, and we hope maybe some board members can participate as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that it make me be a girl is maybe marry a girl when I was eight. So, that was like the furthest thing from my mind.
So, you were pink.
I don't know.
It sounds like there are some threads between the board game and simulation, and the fact that you choose a career and you get paychecks based on that career and so forth.
Yeah, that's exactly right. All, all three high schools are participating, and again, it starts next week, and if folks are able to give some time, I mean, it basically runs all through the school day, and we'd, we'd love to have, love to have any community members, you know, help out at one of the expense tables.
Thank you, Dr. Smilak.
Thank you.
Good question there, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Vaughn.
Very most welcome.
No, it's opportunity to have questions concerned right into the record. I believe we have one this evening. As, you know, policy states, I will read this verbatim. Then we will get back to the person unless we have an answer this evening to read into the record, and hopefully, we'll have an answer. This is from Susan Rocco, 2718 Lucerne. Question is, "I thought that if the kids would wear masks, they would not have to continue wearing masks. The dashboard shows 132 in quarantine." Do we have an answer?
Ms. Rocco, can I just clarify? Are you asking if the, if the children wore masks, you're wondering why they're still quarantined?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and as I mentioned at the beginning, it's a number of different situations. The quarantines we're still seeing are from a lunch table, which is rare, but it does happen because students are taking their masks off at that point. All of our, our schools actually have seating charts now for their cafeterias so that we can identify that, or, you know, there's cameras in our high schools so that we can identify. So, that would be one. The second would be some type of extracurricular event, a band, for instance, you know, they take their masks off to, to, you know, play their instruments. Sports obviously doesn't have their, their masks on during practice or competitions. And then, the third piece would be, it just comes from their family. And actually, that's what we're seeing more often than not. They're exposed to mom or dad or grandma and grandpa, you know, and they were in the same household, and the, the relative contracted it, and then the child has to quarantine, unfortunately. So, it's really those three factors.
Okay. And that's the only question we had this evening, correct? Then, let's move on to Resolution 2021-09447, to adjourn to executive session for the purchase or sale of property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 2021-09447. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
2021-09447 has been approved. To note, Ohio law provides that school boards may meet in executive session to discuss legal issues, property issues, and personnel issues. Because of the confidential nature of these issues, this part of the meeting is closed to the general public, and the matters to be discussed are not specifically listed on the agenda. No resolution will be voted on during executive session. All voting must take place in open session. It is now, what time?
7:01.
7:01, and we are adjourned to executive session. Please be advised that we have adjourned to executive session, and that no further votes will be taken, and that we will adjourn the meeting from executive session. Thank you.